Reed.
Here.
Mr. Whittington.
Yes.
Mr. Burkle.
Yes.
Thank you. We do have a couple additions to our agenda. One being the MERS resolutions and Jim Mayville on animal control ordinance.
Actually, three resolutions for MERS.
Thank you. Anything else?
For approval of the agenda with your amendments.
It's been moved in section on D.C.I. Opposed? Want some passes? Reed, any other cash balances?
Yes. 101 general fund, it's four thousand two eighty-three eighty-nine. And total G F cash, fifty-four thousand three three eighty-nine. And that was after the move.
Thank you. Are there any public comments at this time? No public comments? Jim Mayville, talk a little bit about a dog ordinance proposed. Can you give us some background?
The main reason that we're doing it is we're trying to create more funds for the county. Thus terminated civil infractions, majority of that money will now come to the county instead of going back to the state. We changed a couple of different laws in there. Kind of benefit, you know, or kind of help out the community. People are accumulating too many animals nowadays. So we're trying to cut that back by changing the amount that they're allowed to have unless you are a hundred and a half kennel licenses. That's mainly the only one we're changing in there. Everything else is going to be standard as it is now. And the whole thing is just to change from a misdemeanor to a several infractions. That's the whole point of us doing this.
And before citations would be written, but the state would get those funds?
The county would get, I don't know the exact number, Mike has all that information, but it's like we charge, say the dog running a yard is a hundred and eighty-five dollars is what the fine was. If the county got like thirty bucks of that. Now it's going to be, the majority of it's going to come back to the county. Again, I don't, they never gave me any of the numbers. Aaron didn't work with my career on them.
Okay. I know that Mike wanted to look at some of the ordinance. He had a couple suggestions. And again, it was more, we just got it, so we thought that the board should have the opportunity to review it and then make perfect sense for you to come and explain the background there. And so we're in the very beginning stages. There was a comment or a suggestion that it might go to the planning commission first?
But maybe we'll go through them and as they handle all the other ordinance, we better put something together and bring back in the board, then we can take it up in the township before we act on it. Because some townships have their own ordinances in regards to the number of dogs and such.
How many dogs will you allow?
We haven't quite got to that number yet. I, because I kind of put up a thing too about that, because some of the people do have a lot of dogs and they all are licensed. But most of them have kennels, which are hunting dogs. I mean, I got guys that have thirty-five dogs, have sled dogs. But that was, my problem was that some of the people don't have kennel licenses. They're house dogs and still have ten, fifteen dogs. But, so I was, we were kind of trying to figure out what we were going to. Certain townships have their own.
What do they pay for kennel license? Do they pay for a dog after somebody?
The way the kennel works is it's, you get either ten kennel license, which is, they're only a buck a dog. Or they have twenty-five. And we, the max we allow is twenty-five. And then the rest of them have to be licensed individually.
All shots and a home chef?
Yep, they have to have the rabies. We have to see all that stuff before we give them their license. Just like when you order by your dog license, you've got to bring your proof of reeds. We go out and do kennel inspections, make sure they're all suitable, you know, the right size and that. And we charge for that too, to go inspect their kennels.
What's the purpose of the amount of dogs restricting that? Do we have a reason or?
Honestly, I don't, I don't, I mean, I know like in the city, and that would be more of a problem. You know, you go to a house that your neighbor's two feet away from you and you got ten dogs. I mean, compared to living out in the country, having fifty acres and having ten dogs. So that's where my problem was too, was trying to limit, I mean, that's where I guess the township ordinances would come into effect. If they want to regulate their own amount of animals, they want further township or the city or whatever, you know, you could be getting them to where. So that was one of my complaints, was trying to maybe not put that in the county ordinance, leave that to the townships and cities.
It makes good sense for us to talk about this now and get it to the townships and let them hash it over. And we're, I don't think we're in any hurry for this at all. It's just something, you know, the state takes enough of our money so if we can.
Have you looked at other, other counties, what their?
I know Doug's been looking into it. I don't know how, I haven't talked to him in a little while. He had sent me a copy of it and I made some remarks in there to change things. And I sent it back to him and I have heard nothing from him.
I think Roscommon has something in that effect. So they also have cats too, but you're all, some of the cats, you know, so.
Yeah. I know, I know the city does that, but the city does, I think you're allowed two dogs and two cats per household.
Are there any other questions for Jim at this point? Thanks, Jim, for coming on such short notice. Appreciate it. We've been talking about it. We probably should have Mike Greer make his suggestions to this, maybe then send it to the townships? Or would you guys want to run it through? Once you guys are comfortable with it, you two sit down, county affairs, then we can bump into the townships for review. Okay? Under new business, we have those three resolutions for MERS. We might as well cover it right now. I didn't even look at these real close yet. Yeah, please.
Um, the first one that says in the bottom lower right corner, page one of two, that is the resolution to actually adopt the new plan as was voted on by the board to put all new members to the C one. And we have a letter of understanding with all the unions with the exclusion of one to opt to that. So the first two pages, that resolution is solely just to set up that new plan. Page three, that is just redefining according to this plan, how many workdays or work hours per day before they would qualify for MERS. And that's the same structure as all the rest of the plans, which is a seven hour day. And then the last page is just excluding temporary employees. So if you have, let's say, marine patrol, people that may work ten seven hour days a month, because they're temporary or seasonal, it would exclude them from participating in that plan. So these resolutions would be four, five, and six. If we could start with the resolution to adopt C one.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Please call it out.
Michener Carl?
Yes.
Michener Walters?
Yeah.
Michener Reed?
Yes.
Michener Whittington?
Yes.
Michener Burkle?
Yes.
I have a question on the seven days. Not all departments, sorry, seven hours. Not all departments have seven hours.
Um, that's a rule, a MERS rule of thumb, even from the sheriff's department who work eight hour days, as long as they qualify with seven, they would be eligible.
Okay.
Move adoption of resolution number five.
Support. It's been moved and supported. I don't know. Please call it out.
Michener Walters?
Yeah.
Michener Reed?
Yes.
Michener Whittington?
Yes.
Michener Burkle?
Yeah.
Michener Carl?
Yes.
Want some passes? And the final one.
Move adoption of resolution number six. Support.
It's been moved and accepted. I don't wish, please call it out.
Michener Reed?
Yes.
Michener Whittington?
Yes.
Michener Burkle?
Yes.
Michener Carl?
Yes.
Michener Walters?
Yeah.
Thanks, guys.
Want some best? Any reports? Michener Walters?
Looking at the wrong sheet. Uh, the twelfth D A meeting, thirteenth Sage Township, eighteenth Glavine City. It's kind of different when they have two meetings a month in the city. Uh, last night, myself and Commissioner Carl and Commissioner Burkle attended local government. And just tapped some of the things that were mentioned was Joel Johnson working on the O R B. Wicksum Lake Dam, some issues down there. Soil conservation, tree sales are coming up. And the next local government will be at Seacord Township, April twenty-second, seven P M. And today is afternoon. I have mental health and all that.
Thank you, Commissioner Walters. Commissioner Carl?
Yeah, same pretty much as Terry. I attended the township meetings last month. Started again shortly and the council and local government last evening.
Thank you. Commissioner Burkle?
Uh, Michigan Works Seventeen D Board last weekend, Miss Branch, the Fair Board last Tuesday. Human Services also on Tuesday. The Michigan Works alumna celebration, which was well attended, I mean, as well. The, uh, last weekend, we attended the Michigan Republican Party Convention in Lansing. Barbara Schaefer, Sharon Township, was elected the treasurer of the fourth congressional district. And Linda was elected committee woman for the Michigan Republican State Committee, representing the fourth congressional district. And I believe that, by the way, is positive for Glavine County inasmuch as we do have a voice or have someone picking up for us on policy and positions that take place that impact all of us, regardless of Republican, Democrat, Independent, or whatever.
Is that it?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Whittington, you have a list.
I, uh, I've attended Barrett and Seacord Township meetings. And it is spring gets closer and summer gets closer. The phone calls are getting more frequent on the Boyd's Hydro, the dam situation. It's going to be very enter, I, what I'm telling the townships that I represent is to keep very close attention to what, what's being out there. And the second biggest question that I'm asked is about the drains. And I'm going to get ahold of Bob on that. There's, on the assessments, there doesn't seem to be a clear understanding as if, take a lane, lane drain for instance. And there's a suspect, who ends up perpetrating that assessment? And, and that's a question I need to get answered because I had three of them ask me the other night about that. And I don't have an answer. I don't know, you know, who's, who would be included? Anyway, I'll give Bob and get that straight on.
If, you know, not to interrupt, but possibly if he could get us something in writing, we could throw it on the county website even.
Yeah.
That might help.
And that, you're right, that's, we've got to get some answers because it won't be very long, the other world will be starting.
We've often gotten questions.
So, and I attended along with Josh, E D C meeting yesterday. And I'm happy to report that things are moving along well there. We, we have a new director who I have to see sitting up there. Audience now, and him and Scott and Oliver doing a fantastic job, moving forward. And I, I think you, have you met all the commissioners?
Yes, I have.
Why don't you introduce each area for the audience?
Yeah, uh, Mr. Bob Ballmer, he's an E D C director and doing a fantastic job so far.
Thank you.
I know he's all over the place. I figured he did.
And you know, the nice part about it, he knows everybody pretty well and you've come to me.
You know, and over the years, you know, back, this was back ten years ago, we had an E D C try to, try to go with that. It really never materialized, but it's come a long way in a short period of time, I think. And it's very interesting, very much needed. And I see all the counties are really getting involved in it now. And vice versa, they're up there, the thing you can get. Anyway, I'll go with the finance matters. The first one is Jim Mayville, animal control supervisor, has submitted quotes to have two new doors installed. Earl Building Supply came in with a price, a bid of two thousand five hundred and eighty-five dollars. Katie Construction came in with a bid of two thousand one hundred and seventy dollars. And the committee has made the recommendation to approve the purchase from Katie Construction, what cost would be paid from seven oh one zero 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 three six six four three zero. And I would make that motion.
Are these different doors from the ones we had replaced not too long ago?
Yes, these are the doors between, well, Jim's here, we might as well.
The main entrance door into the office and then the door that goes from the office into the kennel. They're just rotten, the hinges are falling out.
These houses have been replaced and they were quite expensive because the bottom half of the doors were different material.
Yeah, we had, it was Dave Katie that capped.
Those, they were capped with stainless steel.
Yeah.
Katie did.
Those are holding up good, Jim.
Oh yeah, those are great. I mean, they look awesome and we haven't had a problem with them at all.
There's motion and support, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
For two, undersheriff Hartwell has requested permission to purchase a new upright freezer for the jail kitchen. The committee is recommending to purchase up to nine hundred dollars from line one oh one three five one nine three oh zero zero one. And I would make that motion.
Support. All right, ready for the questions? There's motion and support, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
The committee met with the treasurer on the vacant position in her office. It was a discussion to allow the hiring of a twenty-six hour employee to replace the full-time vacancy. This position would not be subject to any fringe benefits, who would fall under the unit six deputy wage scale.
Why do we have deputy in it?
Why would it fall? I wasn't.
Why would it come under?
I'm confused. So why? I guess, I'm asking myself.
It's a unit six position, but I.
And they're all top deputies.
But I don't know.
Oh, deputy, deputy treasurer.
Deputy treasurer, they're all deputies.
It's the semantics. I got it.
And that wage scale is?
Is.
What was the age, eighteen, sixteen, eleven?
Sixteen, fourteen is tapped, but that new person would come in at eighty percent.
I will make that motion.
Unless it's a transfer.
Support. It's been moved, second option, favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Through the fourth, the equalization director has purchased Apex accessory software. The total cost is five hundred and forty-five dollars. And will be paid from line one oh one two two five seven two seven zero zero one. A motion is needed to approve the purchase of the software and allow the contract for the software to be signed. And I would make that motion.
Support. Just a comment, I stepped out on it then, I used to allow him to purchase that. He said it'd be slightly over five hundred, but he needed it. And that's what we negotiated with his contract, the other those stuff too. So it's been moved and supported, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
The county clerk has revised the two thousand thirteen salary schedule for the board's consideration and adoption. A motion is needed to approve the document and I would make that motion.
It's been moved and supported, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
The clerk has requested board permission to apply to MERS for the two thousand twelve annual valuation to be used for the audit. A motion is needed to allow the clerk to sign the necessary documents and make payments for the vacant valuation as billed. And I would make that motion.
Support. It's been moved and supported, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
And last but not least, it is a recommendation of the finance committee to sign the contract with M G T to perform, to perform the allocation user cost. This is based on the recommendation of the finance to coordinate or activate research. And I would make that motion.
Support. It's been moved and supported, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
That's it, Mr. Chair.
All right, I had a few things here. And I might as well just start. One, you guys should have seen the letter from U A W allowing the transfer from the treasurer's office over to the equalization department. And that was budgeted for more of an M Y I because we got that. And then we have, that was just the letter of support, or letter of acknowledgement and research from Neil. Uh, for the M G T, which I appreciated him giving me that letter. Verizon Wireless has been contacting me multiple times. They have a new rep for municipal employees and counties. Glavine County is a bit unique. We don't have cell phones for our employees. We give them a stipend, however. That being said, with two pieces of paper, I believe, we can get a nineteen percent discount for our employees. So what I'm asking for is the board to allow me to sign this contract with Verizon, essentially opening up an account so then department heads and their employees can log in and get a discount. No cost or expense to the county whatsoever. It's just allowing us to open up a, an account with them for the discounts, so.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Support. It's been moved and supported, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. So we can try this for a year, so we'll see how that works. But they'll get a discount on their service and any equipment.
Josh, is that, is that current users will get that discount, do you know?
Yep. And it won't affect their contracts at all.
No, just in that one added to, if you go down with.
Today and then submit it back.
If you go to Verizon in Midland and take them your I D badge or your check stub, they will give you that fifteen percent discount right now and twenty-five percent off on all accessories.
It just depends on, there's two of them.
You have one a minute? I just got mine. You just give them your I D badge and a copy of your check stub and they, they do it right then.
They looked it up and said the county didn't have them.
We, the county doesn't have one, but we fall under the state of Michigan. Anything the state of Michigan does, the local government's getting, and that's where it is.
There's, there's a couple of different discount programs. This one's nineteen percent across the board, so it depends on what you're doing, so. But if you guys want to use it, you can. If you want to do whatever you're doing, you can also. Also, there's a emergency management reimbursement statement that I revamped this morning a little bit. I did it on a spreadsheet, which I think will work easier for Leo. And this is something we had Doug Jacobson actually draft up the first part of it. And then I wanted to get the, um, the bottom spreadsheet portion of it done. So if you guys are all right with this, we'll begin using this. And this is how we can build back services on product that's used during scenes.
Need a motion for that purpose?
Yeah, let's do that, only because that way we can continue to use these all.
Second.
Whatever keeps the clerk happy, we'll enter this into the policy once.
Okay.
Yeah. Thanks for the suggestion. Um, it's been moved and supported, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. I lost my train of thought. Mileage. We have a mileage form here, Glavine County non-emergency mileage and reimbursement voucher. So this, with the adoption of this form, would be used for all our county vehicles that are non-emergency. So the building department, zoning, plumbing, heating, H V A C, maintenance, any of our county vehicles that are being driven, we would begin logging them. And essentially, it's pretty easy, utilities on foot board and you put the date down.
Call back, call, call, you can get them.
So we can track where our vehicles are being taken. And the same form can also be used for reimbursement. So if anybody wants to reimburse for mileage, we want beginning and ending and so on and so forth. And this is a way for us to tighten up on and make sure that one, where when people are traveling, they're, you know, going the right way or whatever. But it protects us and them. And so, and it was recommended by Eric Financial Coordinator also, so.
So moved.
It's been moved and accepted, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Would this, would this call you a fact answer today?
We will do this effective today, sure. And I'll explain it a little bit more at our department head meeting tomorrow morning. And then I just wanted to center the logo up on this one too. But we'll get that. And that also, we can enter in our policies when we, when we get to that. Let's talk a little bit about Antler Arms last night. About one twenty-five yesterday afternoon, Glavine Fire was dispatched, Antler Arms serves an apartment fire. Prime example of emergency management and the community pulling together. So regardless of how the fire started or who was involved, it affected three apartments immediately. Though the center one, where the fire was, smoke damage and water damage on either side. They had to evacuate the whole entire building and relocate everybody in that building last night. So I know Glavine Fire cleared probably at two thirty, three o'clock. Leo was there and didn't clear until roughly six thirty and he had the cirque team there helping. I know that there's local businesses that donated food and assisted with some shelter. Some people went to Maple Manor, some went to the motel. All of that, it went fairly smoothly and we appreciate the efforts there. This is an example of where Leo will be able to use this and try to get the county reimbursed for any of our services and costs. Because that would be charged back to the insurance company of the housing commission. So we'll see how that goes. Nobody was injured that I know of. Everybody except for those three apartments should be relocated back into Antler Arms sometime today. In a perfect world, and it's close sometimes. The dam, Bill Lang contacted me last Friday. We met with Joel Johnson, get some office hours here in Glavine at the library. So we spent, I would say forty-five minutes talking about what the concerns are and what direction we should go. And we threw some ideas back and forth. And the bottom line here is making sure that, much like the FEMA task force, that we're all on the same page and that we're communicating openly with different ideas. The big concern is if it's, if the Wicksum Lake is drawn down without any bonding, what protects the county and Wicksum Lake and everybody from, being assured that that's going to be brought back up in a timely manner? So that's what we're looking at.
I forgot to mention last night, supervisor was there and said that they would have a meeting in Billings Township, March twenty-first. Did you give me a time? I didn't hear a time to do it.
I think I wrote it down.
I know, I think Joel Johnson invited him, the M T A rep. We had a new M T A rep out there last night from the steering tour city, that went from Billings Township and he said he'd be up there again. So I think they'd be going up first, you tend.
Yes, I agree. I do know there's a target date, the general date of mid-March, that we're going to meet in Lansing.
That was mentioned.
And, and we don't know when the.
And when Miller's back in town.
Very. So we'll, we'll just stay in close contact with each other on that. And as we're getting emails and stuff bouncing back and forth. I know there's some different groups with pretty much the same agenda. And that's all good, but we really, we just stay focused on our governmental group at this point until we can, you know, make sure that we all know what's going on.
I wrote down evening, is all, I can put a time down. I don't think they actually said a time, but.
Well, once we have a time, we'll make sure time gets it out to everybody.
They were asking at that meeting last night to have county affairs handle that similar to what we've done the FEMA. And I think that's something we should look over and maybe give an answer to. It just kind of coordinates things and keeps it split.
I would expect they'd have a full house up there too. But only because that's, down there all of them is downstairs. Certainly, they are a lot of people, very interested in what's going on, so.
Is there any objection from the board of county affairs for the handleup?
County affairs should. I've only been involved to this point, just because it's pretty preliminary. We do need at some point to get a, another task force organized. But we're really trying to figure out, we're, really what we're digging into is what can the state ant or the county do to protect the lake? Is, you know, is, do we need to have an ordinance? But we're really trying to figure out, we're, really what we're digging into is what can the state and/or the county do to protect the lake, is, you know, is, do we need to have an ordinance that would require a bond at the county level? Or should it be the township level and that's specifically what Joel Johnson's working with the state right now.
I would like to think that, uh, those two such as, uh, late in August, we set like words.
I can see the township, well, you know, because, uh, two, the combined townships, the river went through the township, so.
We're, we're brainstorming.
Very good question, tie it off to an attorney, which would be the best way to.
I think that's what Joel's objective is, is to speak with the Attorney General and try to work something out with them and the D E Q. We'll figure it out, we have it in the past, we just need to work together. Anything else from the board, I? Did I not do that? All right, boys. You guys have a copy, it does have to be done by a resolution, right? We just need to allow them, uh, to do our audit this year? Did they have a letter here?
There's two papers, one's a letter and the other one's engagement.
Right there. So our auditors, um, Andrew Hooper and Hoblick, there's a letter of engagement and I entertain a motion for me to allow me to sign that.
So moved, support.
It's been moved and supported, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is, and then, more specifically do they have to ask one another?
Well, I have the original. Basically, if they start their audit, then we can make first and that, that will turn, signature by.
So it's the same, they're not charging us anymore like last? Uh, and they are starting in the week of March?
May first.
May first, so we don't need to vote on that?
No.
Okay. Is there anything else with that? I don't see the signature by, oh my goodness. Okay. All right, is there anything else from the board? Anything from the public? It's been moved in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Motion adjourned, support.
It's been moved in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes, thank you all.